This regularly scheduled school committee meeting of the Fitchburg Public Schools, Monday, February 28th. Let's see, who can I have lead? You know what? Mr. Thompson, lead us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee chair report. I have nothing to report at this time. Resource committee.
Nothing at this time. It'll be meeting next week.
School building needs.
It'll be meeting next week.
Policy committee.
In the midst of scheduling, nothing new to report.
Thank you. Student support committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just a little update. In an effort to address the concern of Mr. Frank Gallo III concerning the lack of coverage to keep the restrooms open for the students at the high school, I was able to secure the approval of Principal Roach for my subcommittee member, Ms. Reynolds, and I to go over to the high school on the 18th and be able to cover the facility on the second floor. And it was very rewarding to see some of the students pass by and, you know, with a smile on their face, "Oh, this is open now," and was able to go in and use the facility. In addition to that, on last Wednesday, the boys varsity basketball team had a game against Haverhill Basketball Team, and our boys played so well. They did such a wonderful job. They played so hard. I mean, we, both Ms. Reynolds and I, enjoyed that game so much. Our boys missed by one point. Oh, but they worked very hard. They worked very hard. And this is just the beginning, Mr. Mayor. It is the vision of the student support subcommittee to be able to do everything in our power to be able to provide the necessary support to all the students in the Fitchburg Public School. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Doc. Any questions or comments? Seeing none.
What one comment?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Do I just push? Oh, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Knight, very much for coming to Fitchburg High School. It was very much appreciated. I'm a huge supporter of our basketball teams as well, and I'm sad that we lost against Haverhill, but thank you for coming and thank you so much for your receptiveness in addressing the issues with the bathroom. I think it's really quite phenomenal that you're taking a hands-on approach to this.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? School personnel committee. I have nothing to report at this time, nor for the executive committee. Student representatives, take it away.
Hello, my name is Tia Gopal, ex-officio member of Fitchburg High. Eventually, South Street Elementary School will become an early childhood development center. All teachers in grades one through four will be transferred to other elementary schools, including Cracker or Rhinegold Elementary. These teachers at South Street would like to know in advance when they'll be transferred, what school they will be assigned to, and what grade they will teach.
Yeah, I'm Frank Gallo, and I just spoke a second ago, but I just want to notify you guys of a few things. We've had a very smooth transition to the now mask optional system that you voted on two weeks ago. The majority of students still continue to wear masks at Fitchburg High School, although that could potentially change in the upcoming weeks. We are wondering a little bit about the winter ball. It was alluded to that we were going to have some kind of dance at Fitchburg High School in the upcoming weeks, I heard March 12th, but not a lot about that has been spoken about in the past, like, two or three weeks. I haven't heard very much about it, and some of the students are wondering. The bathrooms are considerably better than they were a few weeks ago. There's pretty consistently bathrooms open now. We've hired new hall monitors, and I think that that's very helpful. There was a lot of travel over break, and we were wondering if that might have an effect on the COVID numbers, but that's kind of a wait-and-see thing. And we've moved to a new subsystem at Fitchburg High School. Substitute, different teachers in the building can substitute from teachers for overtime pay or something like overtime pay for additional monetary benefits, and that's really helped alleviate the stress upon our, kind of like, student coordinators in the cafeteria, and it also really helps the students out focusing in class. It's much better to have a teacher in the room, and the students have been very happy about the new subrule. Thank you, no, I have nothing further to say.
Any questions? Seeing none, moving along. Approve of the minutes from a previous school committee meeting of February 7th, 2021.
Make a motion. We approve them.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed is unanimous. Approve of the minutes from the school committee executive meeting of January 3rd, 2002. 22, excuse me.
Make a motion. We approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on, executive session, no need at this time. Communications, do we have anyone wishing to make a statement? Either remotely or in the audience? Seeing none, communications. Again, nothing at this time, public comment? Anyone wishing, anyone signed up for public comment? Seeing none, we move on to the superintendent's report. Mr. Jokel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we have a few presentations. We'd like to first start off with Eva Kelly with an award that was presented recently to Luisa Fernandez. So Eva and Luisa, would you please approach the podium?
So thanks for your time tonight and for having us. I'm here to recognize Luisa. Luisa has received the 2021 Changemaker Award from the Institute for Nonprofit Practice in recognition of her tireless efforts and dedication to our families and community. The institute honors 50 individuals a year from across the country with the award in recognition of service to their community amidst global pandemic. This award shines a light on individuals who have been on the front line supporting our neighbors and neighborhoods and community, demonstrating remarkable service, courage, and generosity while confronting unprecedented adversity over the past two years. They show the community, they show up for the community in profound ways and sustain others despite unrelenting circumstances.
You didn't know where I came from. I thought we were talking about the Spanish classes tonight.
Surprised.
Well, I am inspiration everywhere. I love to work for Fitchburg Public Schools, and I see everybody working super hard, so what I'm gonna do, I need to work hard too. So, thank you. I'm very nervous. I wasn't expecting this, but thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Okay. So, next up, I'd like to talk about some of the program that we provided our students during the February vacation. First, I'd like to welcome Jen Fisher up to the school or to the podium to talk about the Young Falcons program at Fitchburg State University last week, so.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. We partnered with Fitchburg State University during April, actually, pre-pandemic, we started planning for this, and then pandemic hit, and we had to postpone it. Oops, sorry. So, we worked together with the education department. We connected with professors and college students. So our fifth and sixth graders, we had 20 fifth and sixth graders that went to the campus. They get to spend four days, Tuesday through Friday, oh, Friday was a snow day, but three days on campus. They get to try out classes with professors. They went to the art studio. They did some sketching. They worked with some clay. They went into a science classroom. They were able to see the business department. They also, the highlight of the whole week, though, was being able to eat in the dining hall, and they were very tickled to get the free ice cream. They thought that was the best thing. They were able to go down to the fieldhouse and check out the fieldhouse. They really got a full experience at Fitchburg State. They were students really in the neighborhood that we selected from. We had a range of special needs students to our ESL students as well as our regular ed students. So, we're hoping to build on this experience. For April vacation, we are going to do seventh and eighth graders, and we're really going to be targeting our ESL students that live in the neighborhood of the college. So we're going to continue with this work and build this partnership out as we move forward. If I could have brought 60 kids, I could have filled that program with 60 kids, so I'm very happy with the way it turned out.
Questions?
I think it's nice that this was thought of and coordinated well with the university and the district and the faculty heads. Way more students could have participated, and hopefully that's something that will possibly grow in future years, and the fact that you're going to do it again in April for the seventh and eighth graders, that's a great thing. I know I'm on the alumni board at Fitchburg State, and one of the things that came up early on when the new VP for enrollment saying that it's almost too late to talk to juniors about college, it's really almost middle school, and this is a beginning part of getting them interested early on in their education, so thank you very much.
The fifth graders are really interested in what happens in the dorms because they kept asking, "Who tells them to go to bed?" How do they know when it's time to go to bed? So the fifth graders got to see the dorm. It was really great. So we're going to continue this and build it out.
And Jen, do you want to mention the celebration on Thursday?
It's Thursday.
This Thursday, the celebration for?
Oh, yes. Oh, so that, yeah, because of the snow day, I guess so many things going on. Because of the snow day on Friday, we were going to have a parent celebration where the kids would get up and do a presentation on what they experienced and kind of their reflection on the week, but because of the snow day, we had to postpone it to this Thursday. So at 5:00, we're going to be at Weston Hall. The kids have come up with their own little presentations, whether they want to just talk about it or just conference with their parents about it, but they'll have an opportunity to share exactly what they did and what they learned from that and what their goals are. A few of the kids were like, "I never knew college. Was this great?" So, to have them experience that at 10 and 11, kind of planting those seeds now, so we're hoping that grows some college students from the area, right in the neighborhood, so it'll be good.
That's open to anybody who wants to attend?
Yeah, well, we have to limit it to 20 because of the, we worked with the Cracker Foundation for the grant money to pay the staff and for other materials, and the school district took care of the nurse and the busing. So we're hoping to grow that a little bit more with some of this United Way Fund that's coming in for next school year, so.
But the Thursday event, that?
Oh, yeah, that's open to anybody, yeah, at Weston Hall. It's at 5:00.
Just have a question. You just mentioned 20, and you said you could have accommodated 60. Is that how many you had, 20? You had 20?
Oh, yeah, we, I had a waiting list within, I put the email out, and I probably had a waiting list within 15 minutes of sending the email out to the parents. So it tells me that we have need for out-of-school time, care, and good quality program for our students, which Justin will probably speak about what he did at Rhinegold, but there, you know, it just shows that we need to provide more for our kids after school and during vacations, and I think we can do it. We're getting there.
Maybe if I can just add a comment, I had the opportunity to go and speak to them, the students, briefly last Wednesday morning, and Jim, you know, what you said about having the students go there when they're juniors and seniors, their mind might be, I don't know what percentage, but made up, and it's a matter of making sure our students feel comfortable walking on the campus at middle school grades and that they know what college is all about, even, you know, what time they go to bed in the dorms, but get an experience of the food, which they did say was better than what we're serving, so I guess we have to up our game a little bit. But, you know, it was a really, I think, great experience for the students, and I think also one of the things they mentioned was they were able to learn about the anatomy and Spanish as well, right?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. They were exposed to college-level professors, and it was really cool to see the kids interacting. The kids were so grateful. They, you know, one of the moms keeps emailing me, "This was such a good week for my kids." They're still talking about it, so they have t-shirts and little notebooks and, yeah, they've got a ton of pictures we'll be putting up on the Fitchburg Public School website probably tomorrow.
Good. Thanks, Jen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and joining us virtually now, we have Principal Justin Sparks of Rhinegold Elementary, and Rhinegold last week hosted a program for more than 20 students for a math acceleration learning academy. So Principal Sparks, the screen and the mic are yours.
Having a little bit of technical difficulty. Can everyone see and hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Yes. Great. Thanks so much for having me here tonight. I see you have a full agenda, so I promised to be brief. Superintendent Jokel asked me to attend to talk a little bit about the Math Acceleration Academy we held here at Rhinegold during February break. Just a quick congratulations to Luisa and to Jen Fisher there, and also Dr. Knight on being elected to the committee. Congratulations on that. Look forward to collaborating in the future. So I came and presented my school improvement plan earlier this year, just to start there. You know, at Rhinegold, we're committed to accelerating math and literacy instruction, creating a sense of belonging and connectedness for all of our students, and ensuring that our students' social and emotional needs are being met. To that end, we're constantly looking for innovative ways to reach those goals and to increase our student outcomes. So when I presented, I hoped to return to highlight some of those successes. Just one quick data point before I get started now, and I talked to you about the fact that a third of our students were reading at grade level according to our MCAS data at the beginning of the year, and just real happy to report that that number for third grade is up to 60%, thanks to the hard work of our teachers and our students and families. So doubling that there is great, and we still have some time to go, so looking forward to that. I'm just going to share my screen for a minute. I have host-disabled participant. Can you just allow me to share my screen?
Yep, go ahead, Justin.
Looks like it's host-disabled participant screen sharing.
You should be all set now, Justin.
Here we go. Just bear with me a minute here.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, you're good.
Can you see that okay?
Yep. Presentation is up.
Awesome. All right, so again, during and after the pandemic, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has been looking for ways, innovative ways to accelerate learning and literacy in math for students, and one of those ways is these acceleration academies, which are offered at all different levels for both literacy and math. And again, these are to supplement, not supplant, current programming. So basically, they require 20-plus hours, and these are during vacations, summer vacation, April, February vacation. Last summer, we were able to hold a literacy acceleration academy for our rising kindergarteners, first graders and second graders. I think we had close to 50, 60 kids there, which was a great way to reconnect with our kids after, you know, the pandemic and hybrid models. The data showed strong results there. They offered a math acceleration academy grant, competitive grant opportunity this time around for our third and fourth graders, which, thanks to Superintendent Jokel and Assistant Superintendent Thompson, we were able to partner and go after and get. Both of those allowed us to have just about $60,000 in funding, and, you know, some of that funding paid for instructional and assessment materials, teacher stipends, transportation, et cetera. So big thank you to these folks, and also food services for providing both breakfast, snacks, and lunches to our students who were able to come in. A quick picture, I know Mr. Stevens will like this one. Here are our kids. It's about 60 we're able to bring in. I'll wind up here in the gymnasium for a photo op. So just talk a little bit about the model and the requirements. Again, this is a week-long, 20-plus hours of engaging hands-on, of course aligned to the standards, and tailored to meet the needs of our kids based on data. So this was great. The teachers were very excited to have class sizes of 10 to 12 students. You know, I'll have to get my plug in for, you know, bringing those class sizes down to the extent we can. They were really able to provide that individualized attention and support to some of our kiddos, which was great. You know, recruiting highly qualified teachers, there are competitive process, which we were able to do, and then all meals and transportation included. Some of the guidance I gave the team once we brought them onboard, again, working on, you know, looking at the data, what are the students' strengths and what are some opportunities for acceleration? So focusing the small group instruction on that, but then also making it project-based, building in time for collaboration and discourse in the problem-solving and application. Of course, we also snuck in some MCAS prep using our routines from reasoning, which our math coach and Joanne Flag and math director, Tammy Chandler, was able to get for us. And then just, you know, build relationships and have fun, you know, which I think was achieved. So here's our team here. We were able to bring in six, seven teachers. So just a shout out to our two fourth-grade teachers, Sarah Hopkins and Kristy Pike, our math coach, Joanne Flag, and our three third-grade teachers, Megan Hellwig, Melanie Waterhouse, and Heather Dankos, and our Title I teacher, Jess Crook. We were required to bring in nursing staff to support, Jess Madrigal there, and of course, Ms. Stone with all the details and logistical support in terms of family outreach. Picture there. So just, sorry about the graininess of some of these graphs, but just pulling some data here, and we used our Eureka curriculum materials as well as the iReady to determine which kids we'd invite in because we only had so many slots for the grant requirements. So 60 of these kids were able to get in based on their iReady data, and you can see here the overall school placement in the bottom left. The bottom is the fall diagnostic test, and the top is the January, the winter assessment. So you can see some strong gains here from 7 to 26, but still a lot of kids in that yellow and red zone, and these are really the kids we wanted to target, these kids that would benefit from a week of intense math intervention and really bring them up to accelerate their learning and bring them up to grade level proficiency. So if you look here to the right, too, I've isolated the third and fourth grade data, so you can see similar trends, progress here. You know, we look forward to even more as the year progresses, and we've got about, just about a quarter of our kids at grade level math proficiency at this point. So still working on that, but so far, the results from the academy show that we're getting some results. And then up top, looking at each specific domain within the third and fourth grade math and, you know, really planning strategically the instruction around these areas and bringing these kids up. So a couple of pictures throughout the course of the week, you see some small group instruction here. We were able to pilot the sort of the enhanced or upgraded version of the math program we're using, which the teachers all raved about. Some kids working here on a project together collaboratively. We had some special visitors throughout, and Bob and John were able to come over along with quite a few other people. So, you know, the snowstorm kind of threw a wrench in the machine here, so we had to add a couple of hours on Thursday, and we have one more day tomorrow, and the kids will be finishing up their projects and taking that end of, sort of, end-of-program assessment. I'm really looking forward to seeing the outcome and seeing some strong results. That was quick, and I'll be happy to take any questions or comments from the committee here.
Ms. Reynolds.
What was the attendance? How was the attendance?
Yeah, that's a great question. We were required by the grant to record attendance, and we had a couple of kids who missed here and there, Ms. Reynolds, but overall, it was well-attended with the majority, I'm just speaking offhand, 90-plus percent attending all three of the days. So it was good, it was high. You know, just to go back to what Jen was saying before, there's a desire there on the part of the kids and the teachers and the families. The families are looking for, you know, high-quality educational opportunities for their kids, and we were able to provide it, and you can see, you know, here and with Ms. Fisher as well. So, you know, I think this model really works, and I hope Desi continues to offer grant opportunities like this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Are there any other questions for Principal Sparks?
One quick question. Justin, thank you very much. I think it's, again, like what Jen presented, that the fact that you can provide something to your students over the break in this great interest, were there more students who wanted to do this, but you had to limit and select, or was that an issue for you this week?
Yeah, so that's a good question. We started out targeting specific students. We got about 20 or 30 who, I told you before, kind of fell within that yellow range that you saw, Jim. We got about 20 or 30. That wasn't quite enough, so I put it out to all third and fourth grade students, and, you know, we were able to get, we were able to get, you know, up to 60. I was surprised, to be honest, that we didn't have, you know, 100, 100-plus, but I think in communicating with some of the families, you know, they had other plans. They'd already made arrangements for childcare or trips or whatnot. We were able to bring in and target some of those kids who were disproportionately impacted by the pandemic, so we had 32% of our attendees at the program were specialized students, and just under 19% were our language learners. So I was happy we were able to bring in a large subset of that, of those two populations, really in the spirit of the grant and accelerating these kids' learning.
Thank you very much.
Nice question.
Okay, Justin, thank you very much.
Well, have a good night.
Yep, good night. So continuing along the agenda, I'd like to present an update on the redistricting, work that the district has been doing. As we've said from the beginning, as we have information or gain more information, we're here to update the school committee and FATV, the Fitchburg School Community at Large. We continue to meet with a redistricting committee on the third Wednesday of every month. This month, actually, this month starts tomorrow for March. The March meeting will be held in person at the Memorial Middle School Library Wednesday at 6:00 PM, and a community meeting will also occur at 6:30 to get input from the community. So having said that, I just ask FATV to change the share of the screen and actually just share what I have from my laptop. Great, thank you. So as we've been starting all of these redistricting presentations, really just reminding the school committee members and members of the community what our strategic commitments are, curriculum that's accessible to and reflective of all students, tiered system of academic and social emotional learning supports district-wide, staff development and a diverse recruitment plan, sense of welcoming and belonging with students, parents, staff, and all members of the community. As we're presenting tonight and we are in parallel finalizing our strategic plan, which will be presenting in, I guess, part of a package presentation later on in the spring, our values of the district that we've been working on and implementing over the year, growth focus that everyone can achieve and all means all. You'll see that on a lot of the emails and communications that we send out from our office and across the district, that we're vulnerable, we're honest, we're, you know, we're not perfect, and we're always looking to get better. Trustworthy, what we're saying is, you know, based on the facts, and we're trying to share that information out to the community, and as we've shown over the last couple of years, we're all adaptive, and we're all working together to do the best we can for our students within Fitchburg Public Schools. You know, all our decisions continue to be in the best interest of the students, as we've spoken about here at the school committee and at the redistricting committee meetings. The main end results of the redistricting will be the creation of an early childhood center at South Street Elementary School that'll prepare our students for grades one through five, and returning the fifth grade to the elementary schools from the middle So as Tia mentioned earlier about some of the concerns of teachers at South Street, we've been meeting with a variety of stakeholders to get ready for the transition, so I'll just use, take a few minutes to update the community in terms of what we've done this month, as today is still February, and what we're planning to do next month in March. So we have formed an early childhood subcommittee. Our first meeting was last month. The search for the new leader of South Street Elementary, or actually, South Street Early Learning Center, was posted on School Spring on Valentine's Day, so that's live, and we have begun receiving interest from candidates. We've, tonight, we're presenting to the school committee an update where we're at. We have some more details coming up after this. Mr. Shalfo has been working with city procurement and potential moving companies to move teacher items, desks, chairs, to the appropriate locations, and we've been working, actually, last month and this And we've been working, actually, last month and this month, Mr. Thompson, about finalizing the teacher assignments. So principally, the, you know, the biggest cohort of teachers moving will be the grades one through four teachers from South Street and the grade five through eight, or six through eight teachers at McKay. So we have actively been engaging not only teachers, but looking at our data, what teachers' licensure are, and also, you know, making sure that the teachers' union is aware of how the process is unfolding, and that's been a very collaborative process.
And may I just add one thing? And one of the things we did, too, we sent out a preference form to all of the staff that would be affected with the redistricting to indicate their first, second, and third preference for where they would like to go and what they would teach to get some staff input to.
Thanks. So I've reached out to a couple districts for some site visits so we can see what early childhood learning centers, how they're operating, how they're staffed, what specials and programmatic services they're offering their students. So we've reached out to one local and one a little bit more in Eastern Mass, and we hope to have visits in March with, with those two centers. Also, as I mentioned, we, we have begun receiving applications for the leadership position of the new early childhood center.
And then just to go back to Tia's question, March 1st is tomorrow, and we hope to notify all staff by tomorrow where their new placement will be.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, so now moving on, the, we've spent a lot of time looking at the, the new catchment areas of, of the schools. So at this point, I'd like to invite Eva Kelly back up to the podium because she's been the, the lead, working with Donna Hildreth, but also with Mr. Thompson and Mr. Shalfo, and really everybody in central office, and also with the principals, looking at what the enrollment and class sizes will look at like. So we'll get into that a little bit later in tonight's presentation. But Eva, if you want to just maybe talk a little bit about the, the middle school map here?
Yep, so this is predominantly the same as the last time we presented the map. So as you can see, all the blue area would be students attending Memorial, and the red would be the students at Long Joe. So as you know, we've displaced the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, well, incoming sixth, seventh, and eighth graders at McKay. So many of them will end up attending Long Joe. And if you go to the next slide, I can show you the numbers. Right, so these, this slide shows us, on the left is the school and the sections, the number of sections, the grade level, the number of students, and then the estimated class sizes for those grades. If you go to the next one, it'll show us exactly how many students we have to move. So we tried to minimize the number of students, and we've actually been able to reduce those we were moving by Donna and I going back over the numbers and looking at those areas that are considered kind of overflow, formerly known as like shared areas. And we moved as many as we could back into their schools, so we would be moving less students. Do you want to go to the next?
Yep.
So this is the elementary map. So this is the one we changed a little bit. Initially, the Crocker area flowed to the left of the map more, and we had less, more of the students from South Street going over to Rhinegold. So we redid those, so we would not displace those students on the left side of the city toward Ashburn here? Yeah, okay. Next, next chart. I don't have my notes. So this again is a chart for Rhinegold. So it shows you the grade, the number of sections they'll have, the number of students, and then the estimated class sizes. And this is McKay, and this is Crocker. So the last chart is the moves. So these are the shifts. So again, we tried to leave as many kids as we could where they were. Initially, our intention was just to move the South Street students, but we just, it just didn't work out that way. Our, our families are somewhat transient, they move all over the city, so a lot of them aren't at their neighborhood schools. So when we're looking at students' location and addresses, this is what we ended up with moving and remaining. So still predominantly remaining, but no matter how we play with this, Donna and I couldn't get those numbers really any further down.
So do the moving numbers reflect the students who are currently at South Street and would be going to one of these three? Or is that a hundred and twelve, the number of Rhinegold students who are moving?
Right, right. This number, yeah, this does not include the South Street students because all of them are moving, right? So, so this is the, do you want to speak to this?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is special education classrooms across the district. So we're, as you know, we have some sub-separate special education classrooms at South Street, so we had to move those. And we also had to move the subse, some of the sub-separate classrooms out of McKay. So this is what it'll look like in the fall. And this is our meeting, so we hope everyone can attend and ask questions, and, yep.
And Eva, before we leave, are there any questions of Eva?
I have a question. I have a somewhat odd question. Were the middle schools districted by geography before?
We went to a neighborhood school area four years ago. So we used to have a system where students would, could choice within the district.
Okay.
About four years ago, that changed, and we went to a system of neighborhood schools.
So that would have been 2018 that that changed?
Gosh, probably, maybe seventeen?
Seventeen, okay.
Yeah, seventeen. So those, the actual middle school isn't extremely different, it's the elementary map that really shifted.
Yeah, okay. Because I know we're getting rid of McKay, so that's like kind of affecting the, the map that's getting, yeah, the middle.
The middle, right, yeah. So many, many of the teaching staff from South Street is going over to McKay, so many of the students, they had a bigger increase in student population at McKay.
Yeah.
For grades one to five, yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does make sense. I, I was just wondering if the middle schools were districted by geography before, because I have, I've had people that like live very close to me that went to like Long Joe, even though.
Yeah, because not, yeah. So we changed that, but again, when people move, we don't necessarily know. So they might be going, yeah, and there are shared areas.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Does that answer your question?
That, that definitely answers my question. Thank you very much.
Eva, I'm very pleased with the, the class sizes, estimated class sizes. We haven't been there for, for some time.
Agreed.
Yeah, and I know, Mr. Stevens, you brought up last time the eighth graders. So Donna and I, excuse me, Donna and I looked at each, each of those students, and when we, we're going to allow people to appeal their placement, and we're going to take that into consideration when determining the appeal, what, you know, if they've been there for four years. I know you brought that up, yeah.
I just wanted to second that, the class sizes are really notable, and that's a really good thing.
They only saw one twenty-seven. You must really be an expert at this redistricting.
You know, I'm, I'm pretty good, but Donna Hildreth, she is the master.
She really, she really is, she really is.
I'm not the master, Donna really is. So it's really, she's, her knowledge of the city is amazing, so. And Mr. Walsh, I know you asked about streets that we share.
Yes.
That we might have to split. So anybody know how many streets there are in the city of Pittsburgh?
A lot.
So almost eight hundred and fifty, and we only had to share eight streets. So like water, right? Water is one of them. When you snuck, we're sharing, you know, streets that we just couldn't get kids all at the same place, but for the most part, we've reduced that, too. Any more questions?
Hey, just so you know, they also split streets for wards for wards and precincts. One side can be Ward Six, one can be Ward Five, so it's not anything new.
We were just trying to respond to everyone's, you know, input and concerns, so.
Yep, great, good job.
Thank you, Eva. I can bring up my, the update just on the extracurricular. So I'd like to update everybody on the extracurricular requirements. Back in the fall, the Board of Health issued Order Number Four, which required students participating in extracurricular activities, which included all after-school activities, including athletics, to participate in the weekly safety check or PCR testing, formerly known as pool testing. Resident of the community, a parent of students at one of our schools, has petitioned the Board of Health to, to amend that order, and the Board of Health is meeting this Thursday at 5:00 PM. I plan to attend that meeting. I've spoken to the Board of Health Director today, but I just wanted to, number one, tonight, update the school committee with some of the information I shared with one parent in terms of some questions of extracurricular activity over the last few years, but also what my recommendation is for the Board of Health moving forward. So. Said that. The questions were really centered around, you know, how many students were participating, I guess, before COVID happened, and what's been the level of participation in extracurricular activity during COVID and at present. So just, you know, looking at the screen here, and let's just focus on the school year. Back in the eight, twenty eighteen, nineteen school year, the Twenty-First Century Program during the school year was two ninety-four. The year that COVID happened, it decreased to two forty-four, so it decreased by fifty. Then the year where we started off remote learning, it decreased by another fifty, down to a hundred ninety-four, and now has rebounded this year to three hundred forty-one students, who are actually at all-time highs on our Twenty-First Century After-School programming. So that's great to see.
Just to interrupt, Bob, sorry. So just, so you know, for the twenty and twenty-one school year, we were remote, so all the activities that we did last year for our Twenty-First Century were all remote. And then, just so you know, for this year, the number is also significantly higher is because we now have a site at McKay that we're able to support more students at McKay School, so.
And again, similar to the in-school, after-school program during the school year, the summer programming, two years ago, was a hundred forty-four, decreased by, again, almost fifty students down to ninety. And this past summer, where we made a strong effort to re-engage our families, we actually had, it was the largest summer involvement ever. And that was something that, you know, the state was really trying to encourage students to get back involved and try to re-normalize the, you know, the education experience after being remote last year. So again, here's just some notes that summarizes what happened each year and, you know, the impact of COVID. And again, as I mentioned just now, about last summer's programming, to reintegrate our students and for in-person learning and get them to restart socializing again, which was very important, you know, taking them to, you know, the, the Worcester-Wussocks baseball game was, was a big hit as well. And as, as Mr. Thompson just mentioned, this year the numbers are higher as we, because we do have another location. Similarly, I asked Craig Antassi, our Athletics Director, just for a similar summary of what it was like over the last few years. So just looking at the fall participation from nineteen twenty, which would have been the fall of nineteen, we had three hundred and five students participating in athletics in the fall. Then in the fall of twenty twenty, clearly there was no middle school sports, and that number includes the fall two programming, which happened during the spring. And then this year, our numbers for fall participation actually exceeded that of two years ago, so that's great to see. You know, similar pattern with winter, no middle school sports. Again, participation this winter was higher than nineteen twenty, which, you know, the pandemic, the decision was made on March thirteenth, so we were able to get the winter season in two years ago. And then this year, just looking at the, the spring has not happened, the spring was canceled in the spring of twenty twenty, and last year we had a hundred eighty-seven. So again, sharing that out to you and, you know, for individuals who had inquired on, on the trends over the last couple of years. So as I mentioned earlier, and I communicated to the school committee before the meeting in anticipation of Thursday evening's Board of Health meeting, because it is, it is their Board of Health order, my recommendation is that they amend Order Number Four, that had mandated the PCR, the safety check testing, that would only continue for the high school boys athletic teams that are involved in playoffs, and that's currently the basketball and hockey teams. Basketball has their first playoff game tomorrow night at Whitman Hansen, and then, I think, is it Friday night or Saturday night?
Saturday.
Saturday night for the hockey. So when their seasons end, the, our, our recommendation is to continue encourage weekly voluntary testing for the students participating in the all extracurricular and spring athletics. Max, as Tia mentioned earlier, you know, or Frank mentioned about the masks being optional today, and in a lot of schools, about fifty percent of the students elected to wear masks, others didn't, so it was a personal choice, and everybody was treated with respect. So that's the recommendation that I plan to make, and this was after talking with the Athletic Director and the, the trainer to get their input for the remainder of this season. So again, spring sports season, not mandatory, encouraged, and for normal Twenty-First, or for the Twenty-First Century After-School programming, it would just be encouraged, not mandatory. Any questions, comments? Mr. Thompson, now we'll talk about the proposed calendar that was shared with you earlier. This is an annual process. We share with the, the teachers' union for consultation. And so, Mr. Thompson, if you can update the school committee. I know there was a typo on the Goodrich Academy graduation is not June fifteenth.
There's actually two mistakes, and no matter how many times we look at this, we always seem to catch something at the last minute, and I apologize. So if you look actually on the calendar, if you go down, it says June fifteenth, Goodrich Academy graduation. It actually should say June first, not the fifteenth. And then if you look to the right where it says OR, New Teacher Orientation, it should not be August twenty-fourth, it should actually be August twenty-third. Those were the two I caught just now, and I apologize. But so you know, the first day of school for grades one to twelve will be Monday, August twenty-ninth next year. And the first day of pre-K and kindergarten will be on September sixth. And if we skip down, another important, June first, Goodrich graduation, June second, Pittsburgh High graduation, and if there is no snowbed days, the last day of school will be June fifteenth. Very similar to this year's calendar.
Good. Mr. Shalfo, if you want to talk about the, the four budget items here. We have a couple donations and a few grants to submit and almost a handful of grants to accept.
Yep, so we have two donations to be accepted this evening, one from Ms. Prosser, the Administrative Assistant at McKay, two, the Building Principal, Mark Pierce. It's for a hundred winter jackets of assorted sizes, estimated value of five thousand dollars, and this is, will be distributed to families of McKay across the city of Pittsburgh. Second donation is made by the estate of Ida S. Reisenin to Mr. Roach at Pittsburgh High School, two thousand five hundred fifty-six dollars and ninety-two cents, and the monies will be utilized to support athletics in the purchase of sports equipment. We have three grants to be submitted, one through the United Way of fifty thousand dollars. Grants can be to support project-based learning, enrichment activities, and comprehensive student support services. Grants will be awarded up to fifty thousand dollars. Second one is a grant to be submitted to Amelia Peabody Foundation of ten thousand dollars to support professional development in social studies and across the district. Third one, Adult Education Services Planning Grant of ten thousand dollars. Third one, Adult Education Services Planning Grant of $10,000 to explore the possibility of creating a community adult learning center. And we have several grants to be accepted. The first one, Massachusetts 21st Century Community Learning Center's Enhancement Program for Students on IEP. This is $50,000. $10,000 per eligible site to enhance 21st Century after-school and summer programming opportunities for students with disabilities. Also, Financial Literacy Grant of $10,025, provided funding to support the selection and the development of materials, curriculum, professional development, in-person and virtual experience learning around financial literacy. And we have two grants from the Mass Cultural Council, one of $1,000 to Mr. Landry's AV Club at Memorial, and the second to $1,750 will support the Stars residency program at Long Joe. And this is a relationship between Pittsburgh State University, Dr. Day, and students at Long Joe Middle School.
Before I motion to a bundle, I just wanted to express gratitude and condolences to the Resonan family and the estate of Ida. With that said, motion to bundle.
Second, motion to bundle.
Motion made, seconded to bundle.
Action items.
Action items 22-137 up through and including 22-140.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Motion to approve the bundle.
Second.
Motion made, seconded to approve the bundle of those action items. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it is unanimous. Thank you.
Motion.
No need for executive session, we have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned.